...indisensible with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve the consent agenda. Your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. The round will minutes as presented.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
Next on the meeting mail. Farmer Selectman Wes Dakin is petitioning the selectmen to air a documentary guiding the transmission of the LNG as a public service announcement on Channel 18, our government channel.
Can I comment on that, 'cause I do know what that is? So, um, there was a documentary that was produced by Lake Cam, which is the cable...
This is the one.
That's what this is. Yeah, so this doesn't describe it accurately, I don't think, but it's a... They produced it based on, um, the proposal for the LNG expansion in the north end of town and the citizens in the area that came together and talks about what was proposed and sort of the neighborhood uprising against it. And, you know, it was originally aired on Lake Cam as a five or six-part series that was 10 or 12 hours long, and they boiled that down to maybe 90 minutes. And, um, I don't know if I've... I'm a star in that video? I don't know if that creates a conflict.
Yeah.
I don't know if it creates a conflict. I have this is the kind of thing we should want Channel 18.
This was run before.
This is different. This is the abridged version.
Oh, okay. All right. I mean, Channel 18 is... I mean, we went through this back when I sat on the board with Wes. That is why we had Channel 95, the public access, in the past. That's where something like this should be shown. I mean, it's a nonprofit organization that's putting a video together. And it was determined back then, 10 years ago, that Channel 18 is just for town boards and business, so...
Would it be appropriate to put it on Channel 95?
There is no Channel 95. They governed Channel 95.
Oh.
It was two to one. I voted to keep the public access back 10 years ago, but they voted me. So there's no Channel 95 to do that anymore.
So should we then reconsider what the purpose of Channel 18 is?
Channel 18 is...
If it's the only option, if it's the only option we've got now, though.
Well, that... I mean, they were pretty adamant about the time back then that Channel 18 is just for town boards, town, you know, elected, appointed.
Who were they? Who?
It was the two of the selectmen with me.
Okay, all right, well, they're gone.
And, um, I mean, if that's the case, then you're gonna open this up to, you know...
Yeah, you're right.
Everything, so, I mean, it's...
But it feels like we should have another option. Now, what happened, that 95 is gone, what?
Yeah. I mean, we could maybe revisit in the...
Revisiting, you know, putting 95 back on.
Yeah, I agree with the point about let's restrict 18 to... Because if you allow it for one, you gotta allow it for everything. So I agree with that. But I think we need a... We need an outlet for stuff like this.
Are you still negotiating with Cable? Is that something maybe you can bring up with a low price?
Yeah. I didn't realize that channel was gone. I realized nobody ever watched it when it was on, but...
There was watch quite a bit. There was a lot of stuff people put on there and...
There was no control over the content. Yeah. And that's where, I guess, apparently they pulled it at the time.
That it was abused, you know?
Yes, it's coming back. It was. Should we... All right, so should we...
Just table it off.
I mean, I would like... This is very well done. I would like it to be seen, but I appreciate the point about if we allow outside content on 18, we go allow everybody's outside content on 18, and I see that being a problem, so...
Table it off.
Yeah, I guess at this point...
We'll only direct it to the Cable Committee to figure out what they're gonna do with it.
Motion to table at this point and then to be referred to the Cable Committee for their consideration, and we could certainly bring it back at a future time.
Second, yeah. On favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have Heather Sylvia. Our COA Director has worked with AARP for the Townsend Kushner Assessment during the summer of 2018, and the Council on Aging is ready to move forward with developing an action plan. Members of the AARP who network of age-friendly communities became part of a global network of communities that are committed to giving their older residents the opportunity to live rewarding, productive, and safe lives. Well-designed, livable communities promote health and substantive economic growth, and they make for happier, healthier residents. Heather?
I'm gonna turn over to AARP.
Oh, AARP.
That's great. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh, I get the podium too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose that's the dignified way to do it. Hi, folks. Well, first of all, it's a real pleasure to be here. I'm from the city of Melrose, north of the bridge, you know? But suffice to say, I believe in the South Coast. I come here more regularly than perhaps most, and I think the occasion that I'm bringing, you know, coming here today is especially delightful for me, because I was actually sitting beside Jerry Flaherty. Jerry is part of the age-friendly effort we're doing in New Bedford and Dartmouth, and he lives in Marion. So for a Kushner to join this effort is really a tribute to not just Heather and the folks who are engaged in the Council on Aging, but also frankly to acknowledge you all as leaders of the town, recognizing that essentially what we're doing in this designation is acknowledging that as you make decisions around your budget, around policy, around programs, and how you look at this town and its resources, if you can do it through that age, what I call the age-friendly lens, appreciating that when you rebuild parks, when you're doing your streets and sidewalks, that you're thinking not just about, and you should be obviously thinking about the young mother with the carriage, as well as the senior with a walker, and accessibility, the welcoming nature of that environment, not just the built environment, but all other aspects of living in community, which sends a message that we want people to stay in the town. We want people to age in place, as we talk about. But in particular, and I want to sort of make this point, what's happening in Massachusetts is pretty extraordinary. In all other parts of the country, AARP is actively engaged in promoting what we characterize the age-friendly movement. In this state, we've got not only now almost 50 cities and towns in the age-friendly network, we call it a network, but we have a governor who recently did essentially the same thing that this town's done, which is to commit to becoming an age-friendly state. And one of the ways it's manifest, and I think I can sort of relate it to what perhaps you may be dealing with, is the governor has, as you know, that community compact as part of the way they deal with towns and cities. What they did was recently add these for becoming more dementia-friendly and age-friendly as reasons to receive additional state assistance through the community compact. That's one element of how the state is trying to focus on this. Another is matters involving, you know, older worker initiatives, concerns around retirement security, concerns around economic insecurity for seniors. So there's a whole range of issues. I'm here today, and by the way, I'm the State Director of AARP, and whenever I have a chance...
If we want to...
Oh, what happened?
I didn't introduce your name.
Oh, well, that's my fault.
Michael Fasson.
I shouldn't introduce myself.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
So, yeah, okay, maybe I should step back a little. I'm so excited. By the way, I got here early. The rep told me that it's gonna take it two and a half hours to get there from Boston down here, so I got here early. I didn't mean to throw you on the bus anyway. It's a very nice thing to do, so I wouldn't be late, but I had more coffee than I should've. So in my role as State Director of AARP, I'm basically representing about 800,000 members in Massachusetts who are very much, as I'm sure for those of you who might be involved in AARP, appreciating that there's a lot of ways that we can support people as they age, 50-plus. That's our, you know, sort of our membership. But what is really going on is that in our advocacy around public policy, whether it's federal, which most people are familiar with, our working on securing Social Security, you know, in terms of its financial viability, Medicare, other federal issues of that sort, we also engage in a lot of state-based and local-based advocacy. And the other aspect of what we do, who I am representing, is a staff and hundreds of volunteers who are providing programs and services around the state, things like the tax aid program, we're right in the middle of that season. I'm not sure if it's specific to a Kushner, but I know we have over 200 tax aid sites in the state and over 700 volunteers who are providing services for free tax return preparation for anybody of any age. And so those are the kinds of things and programs we do. What age-friendly is about is a commitment for this town to leverage the resources of AARP first and foremost. We have a really strong network of information sharing. It is both virtual in terms of our website and this material that I'm gonna drop off that actually Heather is quite familiar with. But it is the idea of accessing best practices. I mean, there are communities around this country that are doing some very interesting things around accommodating some of these challenges of how to smaller towns, for example, or relatively small towns, I think about 10,000 folks, but suffice to say that this opportunity includes sharing best practices through that network. We also... I made a commitment in our state budget, our state AARP budget, to provide mini-grants to towns and cities who are looking to do particular things in the action plan that is now being prepared. You all made the commitment to do, to go into the network in late fall of 18. You've done your surveys, and I would just emphasize for the audience that, you know, we really believe as an organization that the best way to judge what is gonna be age-friendly, in this case for Kushner, is the neighbors and leaders and those who know the community best. Our role is to give you some focused support, knowing that there are essentially eight domains of interest. It is housing, transportation, social engagement, the built environment, you know, the playgrounds and the parks and the walkable streets, et cetera. So in each of these categories, you may find, and I don't know exactly, Heather, what the survey found in Kushner, but maybe the whole challenge around affordable housing, options for seniors as they're trying to downsize, issues involving perhaps accessory dwelling issues. There's all kinds of iterations of challenge. In our role, we can provide you with good resources and best practices. In our role, we can provide perhaps in an action plan that's about to be developed for the town, you know, specific ideas that you may want to actuate. I'll give you one example. Actually, in Codman Square in Dorchester, Boston, there was an intergenerational accessible garden that was done, and we contributed the monies for the materials and the supplies. And then we had a number of youth group and the seniors, and they got together and really made it a nice, you know, built environment, something usable, something that will last. And, you know, it manifests in all different kinds of ways. So suffice to say, this commitment that the town is making is an acknowledgement that you want as many citizens to feel that they can live as long as possible in a Kushner and feel welcomed, feel supported. I'll make one last point. I have a rather checkered history. I was five terms in the House of Representatives, and I was the Secretary of Elder Affairs for Governor Patrick. And one of the things that I thought a lot about, I focused a lot of my time on seniors, home care issues, and, you know, this one aspect that's happening, I think, in too many communities is the isolation that's happening within the town, within a home. You know, a lot of times we're trying to encourage folks to stay in the home as long as possible, but the... To be candid about it, the soft underbelly of that policy is sometimes we leave people behind. Sometimes people are living at home alone, they're not engaged in community, they don't know what's going on. You know, you know, in terms of tax policy, for example, there are a lot of seniors who are saying, "Oh, my God, I can't afford this tax bill," but how many of them don't even... aren't even aware that there is a debatement process or an exemption or a deferral? You know, there's a number of ways. And we found in pretty much every part of the state that we've been doing this work and supporting towns and cities that do this work, is that information sharing and breaking down the barriers of isolation is a really successful strategy to make people feel more welcome as they age in the community. So I'm gonna end, and I apologize, I'm taking much too long. This is the reform politician in me. But I'm about to give you this, and again, we call this the grip-and-grin opportunity where you're gonna get to hold this, and we'll take a picture. But this is the certificate that comes from Washington, from the AARP National Office, designating the town of Akushnet as being part of the AARP network of age-friendly communities. And suffice to say, I applaud you in your interest in doing this, and most important, as it develops over time, the energy of the volunteers as well as your town official, you know, the ones that work in the town, to make this, you know, a true reality over time. So with that, I want to present this to you. I also have a letter from the National AARP. I don't know where you wanted this to be done. What's the...
Right in front of you.
Yeah, sure.
Chris Hendricks, State Representative.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Heather, and whoever else is involved.
Heather, you're gonna be in the picture.
Sure.
Heather, yeah. She's done a lot of work.
You can't be in it and take it.
I'll gladly take it, don't worry.
We're taking Chris in our technology. Chris, for our technology guy, can you take the picture?
I think I can. I hope I can.
Right, you should. You should.
Okay, Roger, can you just take your... Tuck in here. All right. And Jerry, you look lost. Yeah, pull closer. Here, please.
He would.
Yep, there we are. Fantastic. And we'll do a few just for the fun of it, just so... Well, of course, Heather always looks good, the rest of you.
Wow, very cool. Again, congratulations and thank you for your efforts, and Heather, especially for you and doing... Listen to me, Jim. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Well done, Heather. Next.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda would be budget presentation. Chris Oliver, Technologies.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Kaprow, for giving me this opportunity to present my FY20 Technology Budget. I'll just start off with a brief overview of some of the highlights of what we got through this past year. With the help of town meeting, we were able to finally, after many years without it, install Wi-Fi in both the Town Hall here as well as the Parting Ways Building. So we have Wi-Fi available for not only our guests, but also for our staff in both buildings, and that's in this building as well as the Parting Ways Building. We've also installed access control, which is the key fob readers for IDs in both... Two locations in each building, one in the back here and one in the front, or on the side door of the Town Hall, as well as one in the front door in the back staff entrance, two parting ways, and we're looking forward to Mr. Noble helping me out, put together the template for what the ID badges are gonna look like, and we're hoping to get those out in the next month or so. So the staff will, instead of using your keys to key in, you'll be using a fob, just like they use at the hospitals and other different organizations. In addition, we're in the final stages of a computer network security audit here at both the Town Hall and Parting Ways on our network. While all the servers were replaced last year, I felt it was paramount in the best interest of the town to go through and conduct a security audit, making sure that there's no open ports, open loopholes in our firewall, as well as making sure the proper security permissions are on the network she has unfolded as they should be. So those people that need to have access have access, and those that don't need to, they do not have access. We've also turned around several new computers, turned over some old technology and replaced a lot of new computers, and that is a continuing, ongoing process. So with that said, my FY20 budget presentation, with the exception of some house cleaning articles and a couple of requests, it is, from my aspect, a level services budget. First thing you'll notice is a new line for the salaries of a network technician. That would be for one of my part-time computer network technicians school to pick up some hours here to help out with around town, and not, once again, not just this building or parting ways, but the library, the police, the fire department, as the senior center, the DPW. Am I missing any buildings? Right, the golf course. So as you move forward, more and more, as you know, the world is, revolves around technology now, so I'm looking to get some more hours from one of my part-time people to help out downtown here.
And this, excuse me, this a new...
This isn't a new position. This is a position that is currently... I have a person for 25 hours a week at the schools.
At the school only, so that person would have expanded responsibilities to deal with.
Would have expanded responsibilities, that's right, Mr. Kaprow. Moving down, it's just our software maintenance agreement. That is a big number of $60,000. However, that number pretty much represents our support costs and hosting for our Munis package, our Munis software. That's our... Everything from billing to payroll to human resources, that is through Tyler Technologies.
All this budget is... This is including the school, too?
No. No, so this is just the... This is just the town side, Mr. Chair. So this is all just the town. You'll see that the copy machines, printers are pretty much the same. There's a small reduction in the printers. The telephone remains the same. So what I did with the Internet Services line, 534100, after being here for over a year now, I felt it was important to do a little what I call house cleaning with these lines. I felt that we're taking monies out of lines. For example, you'll see that the email hosting service is a new line. For the past year, I've been actually just taking that money out of the Internet Services, 'cause it is through Internet Service Provider, but I just felt for best accounting practices it was important to really name the line accordingly and move that money accordingly based on the actuals.
The totals between the two, give or take.
Right. Yep. Moving down, our record archiving, that is $900 for email archiving, that is required by state law. We're supposed to, under the public records law, retain all of our emails for seven years. So for public records inquiry or anything like that, it is an email archiving service. That's the $900. The training and testing. So I think it was last year, last fall, that Mr. Noble and I came to you, and we seeked your approval to implement some IT policies. There are several IT policies that, with the help of someone from the state level, we were able to develop, and that was just really the first stages in the beginning of trying to get some. And I say some, because I don't think we had any IT policies on the books. And I told you that these IT policies are great, but in order to implement them, there is gonna need to be some training of staff in not only here, but across the town in best network practices, best computer practices. And that money, that $10,000, will allow us to send, not only send staff to be trained, but also bring in staff, that we can do half-day workshops with one person from each department and flip it around and have the other person in the department in the afternoon take the training. So that's what that $10,000 is in request.
So what does this actually pay for, though?
This would pay for essentially training, whether it's a trainer that comes in or a trainer or someone, a workshop or somewhere that...
So sending people off to a workshop, register for a workshop?
That is correct.
So every town employee will have this done somewhere?
A line. There is... We're at a point in which as many times as you can tell people not to open that attachment or click on that link, it's inevitable sometimes, so we're really trying to get down to best. I don't want to be that town which has ransomware and all our documents are locked up. I can give you an example. I know the town of Lemonster, last year, I believe their school department paid a ransom of over $10,000, I believe, to have their files unencrypted. So I don't want to be up here and beat that person someday.
Keep our name out of the paper.
Exactly. And it is a very real... It is a very real prospect. So the best way to avoid getting into trouble like that is to be proactive and get in front of it and get our staff the training they need to know. And it's not just that. It's when you implement policies such as new requiring passwords to be changed every three months or every six months, and the complexity, people try... It's very important to try to instill in people that you really can't just have six-digit passwords, you know, that is someone's name. And for the most part, people are getting better. But it's all about proper protocols for sharing documents, for sending emails. So that's what that money we cover. Moving down, so the contracted IT support, as you can see, it's been reduced over the years. It went from FY17 actuals of over 16,000 down, and that was when, prior to my arrival, when you were using just a contracted outsourced IT provider. So I'm asking for next year, 3,500, and this is for a company that, really, it's an engineering IT company, kind of some things that I can't get to or some things that are over my head. They have certified IT engineers that will assist me in whatever aspect of the network that I need help with.
It's like an insurance policy, basically, the way, right?
Exactly. Kind of... That's a good way to put it. Absolutely. So the backup software, one of the nice things is that we were able to reduce that line to 2,200. That's because we now back up our software in-house with... Since I came on board, we now have a backup appliance in this building as well as one, the same identical one at the schools. So one of the nice things about having a town-wide department is that instead of paying a pretty penny to have our data stored at a data center, and I believe this one was out at... Previously, the previous IT preventer used the Taunton Municipal Light Plant. They have a gigantic data center out there that you can host base in, and you lease it. And so I was able to reduce that cost of almost $4,000 down to 22, because we now own the appliance, and every night, data gets sent, once it gets backed up here, it gets sent to the schools where it gets backed up there, and the school, once the school gets backed up, the school's data gets sent here. So it's kind of a... It's a fail-safe redundancy in which if there's a catastrophic event in one building and the other, there's still a complete replicate of that data offsite. Email hosting services, that was just really, that's a new line, and that was just a transfer out of the Internet Services. Other supplies, everything else remains the same. That's just anything from computers, computer hardware, to printers, to parts for computers, wiring, anything else that we may need. I did put in a small number of $1,600. I felt that out of this whole budget, considering its technology, there was no line that specifically said computer hardware, so I felt it was important to at least start building that, and so I asked for $1,600 in that computer hardware line. That would be meant just for computer purchasing. And we have the answer...
That doesn't buy a lot, does it?
It doesn't buy a lot, but it's a start anyway. So I'd be happy to answer any of your questions at this thing.
I don't think I have any questions, but I know when Mr. Noble was hired, I mean, that was one of his biggest concerns was the technology, backups, and firewall. I think we're merging with the school, you know, like as one, you know, one town should be. I think we've come a long way with it, and I see progress, a lot of progress, and...
Thank you.
I hear what you... I mean, I work for a bank, and we get three emails a week on password protocols and what to come in, what happens when an email comes in with an attachment and just...
So you're well aware of the rest.
Well, it's just, it's, we live it all the time, so, you know, sort of understand, we gotta be careful and... we've got to be careful in backing up the systems every day, and the redundancies and that, it's all important stuff, and it's not, the technology's where we are, and we just can't take a chance that we're going to have a problem.
Absolutely. Well, I thank you for your support.
Well, from my perspective, life is a lot better with Chris. So rather than me having to do it, it's been, it's been great. And of course, we've had some help from the community compact, not only with some funding, but then with the policy writing, so that's been good use of our resources.
Have we implemented those policies? I remember voting...
Right, and that's, that was one of the pieces of the training.
I remember looking at some of the stuff, this is all great, but we do it. Those were my questions.
Exactly, and that's one of the things that I want to go back to with the training. They're slowly being implemented. It takes time, there's just so many moving parts. I wish I could stand in front of you, Mr. Cabral, now and say, yes, one hundred percent. They are slowly being implemented, and, because I want to, I'm trying to be methodical about one at a time, and there's so many pieces to just one policy, when you're looking at...
Yeah, the policies were very well done. I do remember reading them.
Right, right.
I'll bet we don't do this. It's good that, it's good that we're on that path.
I'm hoping to be able to stand in front of you next year saying, "A good majority of them are complete, and we're following them."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda was the fire chief. He's not here, he's on a call, so we're going to skip, but we could either do it, because I know the basic ideas, or we can do it on the second.
I don't want to go to the woodwork area, so we can do this on the second.
Would Kevin Harris, with the current, you want to present?
You're skipping something out of the agenda, skipping Dan.
I have something. Dan was next?
They're sort of, they're going to want to ride home.
Yeah, we know Dan's ride home versus your ride home. Take the courtesy.
Carol's been...
Thank you.
Carol, this is the phase three of the investigation.
Yes.
Inspector, you can go on, I got a...
Okay. Do you have a copy of the proposed agreement? I didn't know, it was, okay, great. The copy's with me, in case you didn't have that.
Sure.
Great. Well, thank you for having us on the agenda again this evening. Jason Junkoutis is with me, met him the last couple meetings when we've been here. And we were here a couple months ago to review your II program and what the town has accomplished to date. Two phases of the program have been completed. One was, and one was completed in twenty-eighteen. As a result of those two phases of the work, approximately forty-seven percent of the town sewer collection system have been investigated, and approximately thirty-seven percent of the manholes have been investigated. The purpose of the program is to identify infiltration and inflow, to rehabilitate it, which Dan, your DPW superintendent, has done a terrific job of doing, to benefit the community, to save money. As a result of the program, over twenty thousand gallons per day of infiltration has been identified, it has been basically all corrected, which results in a savings of wastewater treatment of approximately twenty-three thousand dollars a year. So it has, and that's ongoing, of course, because it's, the bills keep coming and the sewer keeps flowing, so that's all good. Part of the Department of Environmental Protection's operation and maintenance requirements is that communities have an ongoing II program. Now, the question, it has certainly complied with that. We've had two phases of it done, we've got a little less than half of the system has been inspected to date. This next phase, phase three, would be the continuation of the program and doing CCTV inspection of additional eighty-five hundred feet of pipe and another fifteen manholes, so that it's progressive investigation, it's done in phases. The community has been doing it on an every-other-year plan, which seems to be working out well, and it also is in compliance with the DP requirements. We have a map here that shows what's been done to date, if you want to review that. And I think we have some more copies, too? If they want, if you want to see what's, I think we reviewed this a couple months ago, but in case you want to re-review it. The program started with the areas that had the, appeared to be the highest priority areas of highest infiltration. The first phase did a flow isolation of the entire system, so based on that, we identified the worst areas.
So this is the entire system outlined to it, okay?
Yes. And then the second phase did the, so it's progressive, and we'd be looking at doing the next phase, the exact pipe locations would be identified in conjunction with meeting with Dan, his experience of what he's seen or experienced, or what's come forward in the past couple of years, and the information we had originally, we would determine which areas, which streets, and which manholes would be done.
So question, so you haven't decided yet?
Exactly.
You're saying we're going to do this length of pipe and this many manholes? You haven't, it doesn't matter where they are, it's up to, you'll work with Mr. Menard to figure out?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The idea would be to do the next highest priority.
So you broke it down into four phases, is that what it is, basically?
It's basically what it is. It seemed to work out well for your system. We have forty thousand linear feet approximately of collections, collection system, so doing about ten thousand a year is, it will complete the system in four phases.
And then you start over?
And then you start over. Ongoing programs, ongoing maintenance, just like you do maintenance on our cars. It's, DEP has, had realized that many communities were not maintaining their systems. Infiltration and inflow was a, was a huge problem. No one wants to treat clean drinking, clean water, clean really groundwater, so, so implemented this requirement.
I know I had the conversation with Dan, but there's probably like, no way of finding out how many sump pumps are going into a sink in the cellar, or a drain in the cellar, or...
I'm not interested in, but that is another phase of the program that we have not done anything with yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's tough to do from the pipe, that's typically done with, you know, inspections in the home to verify that those are not going into the sewer.
And that, that can be another phase of the program. It was a...
Oh, you can identify that, you can, yeah?
You do smoke testing.
So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to find spots where the pipe might be broken and groundwater is getting into the pipe, and then we're paying the city of New Bedford to dispose of the groundwater that's leaking into the pipe.
Treat the clean water, yeah, exactly.
Do we know how, I mean, there's a cost to doing it, obviously, and we need to do it, obviously, but do we understand how much we might have, we've saved as a result of not paying to dispose of clean water? Do we, is, can that be quantified?
That was quantified in the first two phases of work, and we identified over twenty thousand gallons per day of infiltration, which would be the clean groundwater coming in.
Do you know what that's worth?
Over twenty-three thousand dollars for a six-month, six-month period of high groundwater. Remember, this is just when there's high groundwater.
Okay.
So during that six-month period of high groundwater, I mean, we could have flooding in the fall, or a hurricane come through, but generally, we look at six months of high groundwater that equates to approximately twenty-three thousand dollars.
So we recover part of our cost by, in one year?
But it keeps going.
And it keeps going, so as you keep finding it, it's, it's the building blocks.
Now, the pipes, you said, now, what was it, the joints, the gaskets on them go bad, or the tree roots crack there, is that what you've been finding?
Some, some of it, a lot of it was manholes, we had a lot of infiltration through manholes, yeah. Some of the pipes, you know, when they, when they get backfilled or something, they get cracked and stuff like that, we had a few like that, bells were leaking, again, the gaskets. If they pushed them in, and they didn't put soap on or something, pushed the rubber in, yeah, it was leaking out of there, stuff like that, we found. But a lot of the bigger ones, like the manholes, you know, some areas of manholes was the bigger ones that we, we found, not necessarily the pipe. But that section that we did camera so far was watered by new stuff, which is all PVC pipe, which is, you know what I mean, a little better, you know, material than what the old stuff is, which we haven't done yet, so...
Also identified some structural defects in the pipes and the manholes, which, if they were detected, they could lead to greater problems ongoing, which Dan was able to correct. And there were some other issues that some...
Operationally, yeah, we found an area with some grease buildup, was near a restaurant, so I know Dan talked to the owner, you know, basically addressed that before it became a full blockage, in which case that would have been, been a problem. So like, not an II issue, but something we found as part of the investigation.
Question, this gets funded, is there an article for this?
There's an article for this.
There's an article for the upcoming warrant?
I'm all set, this is like a routine thing every year, now it's the same story.
Every two years.
Every two years, it's the same, same story.
Anything to add, Mr. Menard?
Nope.
So Chairman will make a motion to approve the phase three? That's an II study. No, I won't make that one.
No, that's coming out.
We're going to go to a town meeting for that?
Definitely.
So you're going to approve the article on town meeting?
Okay, I'm just reading the motion you gave me to do.
Shame on me.
Okay. You tell me to read it, I read it, I guess.
Yes, I apologize. Yeah, this is going to town meeting, so consequently, what you're going to recommend is opposed to the warrant.
So never mind, would you kind of do that in a merger, if you might, we'll do it all when we... I'll do it later.
My error.
I'm saving myself.
Yes. Thanks for coming in again.
Thank you.
I don't know, you've got two seconds, I mean, obviously about the school pipe again. I mean, have you done any research on that since the last time? You were here, the school pipe?
The school pipe, that I'm wrong?
Residents hooking up.
We haven't done any research.
I know, we had mentioned it, you said you might look into something, but no, no.
Okay. What we're looking for is, what can also, yeah, we use the pump station at the schools for. So that's sort of a question, we'd like to see if there's low-hanging fruit that we can wrap in, if there's not, we need to know that.
We had identified an area that could be tied in, that area that was close proximity, right, that development.
Yeah, the reservoir drive area.
Those maps right over there.
No, yeah.
I see those maps right over there, maybe it might be right there.
Yes. And this would be gravity-fed?
Reservoir would have the pump on, I suspect.
A portion could be potentially gravity-fed, but the low-lying areas down closer to the reservoir, that would have to be, they would have to have some sort of, you know, grinder pump to get up to this gravity sewer, which could then flow by gravity down to the station. But some of these, you know, the houses basically closest to the school could, could flow...
Could be gravity? So we might be able to pick up the Lynn Ellen Drive area, thirty-two homes, which cross the street, and the Reservoir Road area, which is ninety-five homes? And can the sewer station, sewer pump station, with that assistance of the grinder pumps, support that quantity?
Right, now, those two areas, and it works out well that they're the closest to the station, and then the, yeah, the number of homes in those two areas combined is almost exactly the spare capacity that we had identified.
So in order to give you an idea on the feasibility of that portion, we'd have to do a study. So I'm going to ask you at some point for a cost estimate on that study. And then we might develop a plan, and we may be able to do that one in-house. Because that wouldn't be necessarily part of the needs areas.
Well, I was going to say, it is part of the need, because it is needs area five.
Okay, but it's only a portion of the area.
Right.
We could almost split that up into, you know, five A and five B, or something like that. Well, we did something similar with needs area four.
Because one of the things I really think we need to do, we built the, we built the pump station at the schools to accommodate the capacity, and it seems to me the easiest thing we can do with those two immediate adjacent neighborhoods is hook them up. But it would also give an idea to people who are in needs area five, how far down the line they could possibly be. So the question would be, if I lived in needs area five, and my system, my septic system was near the end of its life, do I wait for the town, or do I just replace the system, thinking I'll get another ten or fifteen years before we ever get there?
It would help, it'd help the citizens make some decisions.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Just one, I mean, I look at even Peckham Road area, and I've seen septic systems be replaced on Peckham Road, and, I mean, those people are right on top of the sewer pipe. That wouldn't make sense for them to tie directly into that either. It just seems that anyone along that pipe should have the option somehow of tying into that pipe, if that's possible.
Because that was more like a promise when that pipe was ran up after the town took it...
It just kills me to see people with a pipeline in front of their house, replacing their septic system.
Right. Yeah, and that force main, we talked to the grinder pump company to see if that would be feasible, and they told us that based on the length of the force main and the pressure that it's operating at, that they, they don't think it's feasible either.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, unfortunately, without a...
So you couldn't, no one-offs on the line?
Exactly, yeah, without a, you know, the full bill out of the whole needs area five. Yeah, some of those, yeah, even though it is going right by their house.
But those two phases could make sense. The reservoir and the Lynn Ellen...
That could serve those with a, you know, less of an investment than the entire area.
Because another pump station is proposed for that.
Jason, I have a question. What if you put check valves in that line? Would that would help if it was check valve, so we'd go back towards the school? I mean, is that an option? I mean, the school shuts down, someone could put check valves in that thing, and then it's, grind pumps at least on the top section of that force main, maybe? Is that an option at all?
If the school pump station was not running, it could work. No, the issue is if you had enough people's grinders and all turned on pumping into the force main and the school pumping into the force main.
Enough to put up there.
Wouldn't have enough to get past the check valve, so there'd be no place for the waste water to go. So that was, yeah, that was the issue we identified with the grinder pump company.
Okay.
The other, just, just to keep in mind, the other, the other component that we would need to deal with is DP approval. Because the whole point of the CWIP is to prioritize the areas and then, and to be able to expand the system with DP's approval. So we'd be, we would, we would need to submit something to say that we're, why we're dividing up this and why we're moving it forward, which I would think we would be able to substantiate, but that's just another component.
I sort of see this as very low-hanging fruit, sort of on the idea of one set up, as it was. And where we had done the dress rehearsal, that, that could be an easy, an easy take. And that would add a hundred and twenty somewhat homes, so...
Especially homes right on the, right on the water.
Right. And I would defer to Mr. Menard, but, I mean, from a layman's standpoint, that looks, that looks, I'm sure it's not easy.
It's easy.
It's a paper, I don't think that much.
It's that far away, not bad.
It looks like it's only that much.
It's about a day's work, right?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. And to your comment on the timing, I mean, that's, that's all part of the CWIP process. There's going to be, you know, public comment period, and, you know, we've called it needs area five, maybe after public comment, it moves up on the list, other areas move down, so that'll...
Well, to be honest with you, the last meeting scared the hell out of me on the price. So I'm not sure yet how to wrap my hand, my head around how to pay for that.
Right.
And I'm not sure, to be honest with you, I enjoy the idea of being tarred and feathered. So we have to really sit and talk about that. I think we need to sit down and talk about that, because that's a very serious problem. We're talking about one point two million dollars in cost to, just to develop the plan to do a A needs area, and we have seven needs areas? That's a lot of money. That's just a plan.
Right.
Not just to do. And I'm very, very concerned about that.
Understandably so.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. All right, good evening. All right, I want to go with a few of the tools I have. I've got a few in highway, and I wanted to go, the first one on the list, the highway, which is the lift gate for the pickup truck. Basically, we used to have one back in the day, that's actually before I even started. You got that one?
Oh, I have, I'm looking at a different source, yeah, same, same, it's in there.
Hold on a minute. We actually used to have one of them gates back in the day, it was actually before I started. Ray Bowe had one, the truck wanted to catch on fire. I'm just looking to get, my guys are getting a little older, and, you know, the things seem to get heavier, I don't know, so we're looking to put a compactor in the back of the pickup and pumps and generators, wherever that's kind of heavy, we can just slide it on there and throw it in the back of the truck, instead of, right now, two guys, you know, lifting this up and throwing them into the back of the truck. So just, just kind of a safety thing. Bolt battery articles are kind of more for safety and for lifting for our guys, you know?
So this is something that'll come off the back of the truck, to the ground?
Come off the back of the truck now, and then we throw our compactor in and put it in the back. More for our compactor, more, because that's the thing we use the most for doing patching and stuff like that, so that would be the most use for it, but it's also for pumps. You know, hydro, something to draw on there, you can put it in the back. You know, hydro, something to draw on there, you can put it in the back, so.
What's a Mohawk lift, is that the same?
No, no, the Mohawk lift is actually a garage lift, that is for inside the building, and that's the lift vehicles. So that's a sixteen thousand pound lift, I actually got a little thing, but I only got one thing for you, you guys can take a look at it. It's got a twenty-five year warranty, it's made in America. What's different about this lift than other lifts, most lifts got a thing with a cable, and it's got cables and wheels on it. So like the pistons push up and it's on cables and stuff. I have my own personal lift, actually I had a problem with that, one of the wheels broke, one of the vehicles on it, and it got almost, I had to get a ramp truck and put it underneath to get the vehicle off the lift. So this has nothing, this is all on pistons, which is a lot better, a lot safer. And if you look actually inside, inside, you got, this is the Mohawk piston. These are like my lift has, these smaller, you see the size difference in every diameter. So it's a little more expensive, but it's, you can get cheaper lifts out there. But again, the quality and, like I said, the twenty-five year warranty, sixteen thousand pounds, which would lift any of our vehicles except for our ten wheels.
Hey, Jason, for this, you do a lot of the maintenance for...
Maintenance, correct, we do all, I mean, change oil, filters, brakes on trucks and stuff. Unless it's something like really computer oriented, that it's, you know, that we don't have a computer to diagnose it, it would have to be sent out, and everything else, brakes, you know, all the maintains, greasing, oil changes, you know, everything like that, we take care of in-house.
So like that, you could maybe even bring in the town cars or something like that?
Again, yeah, we do actually beckies once in a while, I don't know if she's been by in a while, so probably needs servicing. But yeah, yeah, we do some of them, and like I said, I don't mind. Like I said, rainy days, that's what we kind of do, and then rainy days, that serves our equipment, you know. Sometimes in the winter is a good time for our tools, you know. And currently we're running, we're just using ramps, you're driving up onto a ramp for the vehicles, and sometimes they almost go off, and it's kind of a little shaky, and you're only off the ground this much to get underneath it to work on, it's very difficult. So that's the other reason in this.
So you're not gonna need a building to put around it, are you?
No. Actually, they were gonna, again, I think this was supposed to be happening back in the day, and it just never got done, so. So that was the highway, oh, except for the...
Yeah, the road repair.
That's the road repair, which I don't know if you told them about that one?
Actually, it was their idea.
Oh, okay, so you guys, all right, that's...
You explained that, I think, to us once before, too, for the drainage?
No, 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 this is actually, this is for the road work, this is adding additional, because we don't get a new chapter ninety funding as it is, so this is kind of gonna implement that a little bit, so maybe we can get a few more roads done. And where it's in an article, if we don't use all the money, if you get rolled over to the next year, or if we didn't do no roads that year or something, if you kind of get rolled over to it.
Is that just pavement?
I'm sorry?
It would be pavement engineering, police details.
It could be for anything, chapter ninety.
With the exception of his own labor, meaning the department's labor, it would be everything else, that would be a con to construction of the road, you know.
Now, in your budget, there's a road materials?
Yes.
So some of that is...
Correct.
This is an addition to some of that.
Correct. And I've had a conversation with Mr. Menard, who's been great to work with, on, we're, as you know, trying to balance a budget. And so I want to move the increases he's requesting from his budget to the article.
How much is in the budget for, it's like a nine...
For my road materials, it was one...
One-twenty normally, normally, and then I went up to two hundred, but then we took that out, correct? That's not in there.
Those gone completely?
So we took eighty, well, I went back to...
I'm leaving the hundred and twenty there.
Okay.
So that's just... I'm taking the extra eighty out, because we're giving the two fifty here. I'm taking the engineering costs out, because I've got the two fifty here, and I'm taking the police details out, because I got it here. I think this is a better way to do this, because it's a more controllable, the money doesn't evaporate or float free cash. The number is appropriated, it is designed for keeping up on road and maintenance, in accordance with the pavement management plan that we spent money to develop.
Yep.
But we know darn well that the chapter ninety money isn't gonna meet the obligation of the road management plan, of pavement management plan. So we're gonna have to put some more money into it, but we need to be very mindful of how much, where, and when.
I mean, this is one of the biggest...
Which, again, it goes all through the board anyways, the board, rather than streets, we actually, you know, jump to, you have the, you know, you guys would have to say yea, nay on what we do and what we don't for streets.
Are we servicing eighty-six miles of road? Call it ninety, for easy math. And the chapter ninety money is just not keeping on?
How much do we get a chance with, three hundred?
Three hundred sixty thousand?
No, 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 I don't see, yeah, three sixteen.
Three sixteen thousand. We got a small increase for twenty twenty, but it's, you know, an extra mile.
How much of this two-fifties offset by things that would have been in his budget normally?
One eighty plus the engineering of thirty, plus the police details of five.
Still half under something.
Yeah. But I think it's a responsible try, and then the other thing I like about it is if the money isn't spent, next year we sit down to determine how much money we want to put into additional road. We'll know how much has not been spent, how much we need to refill it. If he comes back with a more aggressive plan, and we have the ability in the capital plan to put more money into it, it's an investment. So I think that's, if you maintain the road, or just let it degrade to the point where you have to redo it, saving money is the goal. The pavement management plan tells you what to do, how far the road goes before you can bring it back. Do you spend money to make a D road a B, or do you spend money to keep a C road a B? So that's important for the pavement management plan. So I think it's making us smarter about how we spend our money. But I still have roads that are way down the line in terms of pavement management plan, that we're gonna have to pay more attention to sooner. So the only solution to that is to find the source of funds now.
Does the pavement management plan, how often is that updated?
It should be updated every three years, but we just got it last year. So it's not due for a few...
You put a five-year plan on it.
Five, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I put five year right now. But again, they said the same thing, it's constantly changing.
The roads slip every year?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think that necessarily, unless they quadrupled chapter ninety money, we could keep up. So the direct answer to the question, we're always behind.
All right, and that was the last one with the highway. We do have one in the water, Enterprise, which is the new water pickup truck, which we went for last year, that was the one that kind of went on hold.
Yeah, and you needed to replace it last year, or maybe two years ago.
Yeah, so...
So what is this, what type of vehicle is it?
This is, it's a utility truck, so it's a one-ton truck with the utility bed on it.
Okay, all right, so it's more than just, it's more than a pickup truck?
Yeah, it's four-wheel drive, this is what the, that's what's...
It's not a half ton pickup?
No, 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 this is a one-ton pickup, four-wheel drive, and I get a plow with it too as well, so it's able to...
Yeah, I thought it might be more than that.
So the plow, the utility body alone, actually I got the coats on that, the utility body's like nine thousand dollars just for the body, and there's another six thousand for the blade, so, I mean, the truck, the truck, I think, just stock, the four-wheel drive, one-ton, is thirty-something, I want to say. Thirty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars was the price of the truck, and then you saw it, and everything on it, you got the lights, you got the light bar, you know what I mean, the backup alarm, this, that, the snowplow. They even charge you for a coat, the green, it's an extra charge, you have a green truck, believe it or not, so.
Is the truck coming out of service, is this replacing something that's coming out of service?
Well, yeah, we still, actually, I might, because we had a spare truck, actually, we had a Dodge, and it didn't pass inspection this, this January, because all trucks get the inspections in January, so the Dodge is out of service, it's all, it's too rotted, so they won't even give it a stick-up. So rather than sink money into that, I might try to keep this truck as a spare truck, the one that's here, and maybe trade the Dodge, and they give you a few hundred bucks or whatever, towards, you know, usually dealers do that. So we don't have to deal with the, you know, putting it out to bid or anything to get rid of it. You know, they give us a few hundred bucks and let it go. So that was my plan.
Any more questions?
Well, the sewer investigation we talked about, and the last is tomorrow.
Of the Enterprise Fund for the school pump station?
Yeah, we had, Slavemann Gassford asked us to consider repaying the sewer Enterprise Fund for the investment in the school pump, since the school pump was only used for the school, and wasn't going to be able to be used for the neighborhood. My concern is that it's conceivable, not definite, but conceivable, that it could be used for an adjacent neighborhood. So it might be prudent at this point not to do anything with that, until we determine whether it is or is not going to be used for neighbors.
I mean, I'm conflicted on it, I think there was a good argument that was made, as to, you know, maybe it shouldn't all be sewer Enterprise Fund, but, I mean, the school department's paying sewer disposal fees, what's your...
Well, they pay for half the sewer pump.
Yes, and they pay for half, okay.
They pay for half.
And this is the other half.
And this is the other half.
Yeah.
So...
But they are paying sewer fees.
And they are paying for the sewer use.
Funds to sewer Enterprise Fund.
Funds to Enterprise Fund. You know, it's, a question is, what's the, what's the value? It's our, it's the town, no matter which way you slice it, it's still the town.
Yes.
Okay? And if we're gonna use it for the neighbors, then, you know...
Then it's worth, then we did it right the first, then we did it right the first.
Then we did it right the first time. If we never use it for the neighbors, then we should give it back.
Yes.
Correct. Or you can get back a portion of that. Again, your decision.
Okay.
I'm not sure how you figure it out, a portion, but...
Hold on for another year.
I would say weigh it till we know we can or cannot use it, and then determine how many houses we can use it for.
Yeah.
And that's maybe where you can come up to where it might be, if you only get this much into it, that's what you can weigh out as far as how much you put back.
Right.
Agreed. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's have a good night.
Carol, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, cut that to five, it is not... Did you want to... If you'd like, you can talk to me. I've got additional time.
Yeah.
We've got something on the second, we can... I think it's important, it's important for him to explain to you.
Yeah.
Old business, Town Administrator's Performance Review. As you know, every year, Selectmen do a performance review on the town administrator. The year runs from December to December, we're already in almost April, and I guess we got two results back for the review, so. We came up, it's been a challenging year, you know, we had five collective bargaining agreements to be renewed. We commend you on your communication, your job skills, your leadership, your financial stewardship. We rely upon your decision-making skills, decision-maker skills, and generally pleased with the level of consultation that we are receiving. You brought our town departments, you brought our town departments and have helped to foster a team attitude in the town, which is, I think is working out very well for the towns. But we do want to bring to your attention, you may be handling a lot of issues. I know I get emails from you about fifteen different things every week. Maybe start cleaning up some of the things that have been going on in there. So in the summary of the whole thing here, the board wishes to express its continued confidence, as demonstrated by this review. We applaud the progress to date. We are pleased in efforts to bring a new town treasurer-collector on board and express confidence in the changes you have enacted for the operational efficiencies. As always, the board counts on the financial foundation of this town, and as our most important priority. We are ever mindful of the tax burden that is placed on our taxpayers. Being good stewards of our finances means continuing to build our long-term capital plan, soliciting and obtaining grants when available, and creating additional cost savings through efficiencies. We feel the implementation of our policies is the reason we can be prideful in our progress as a result of the community. Community, we thank you for your efforts, Mr. Menard.
Thank you very much.
Just so we, the review document that we completed rated you on a five-point scale with, I think, three was meets expectations, four was exceeds expectations, five is walks on water, I, something like that.
Canonization candidate.
Yeah, and, you know, one and two being, you know...
Totally unacceptable.
Totally unacceptable, and in general, I think the average of the reviews that were done were something in excess of a four, which is exceeds expectations. So it was, it was a, I mean, I didn't, I didn't, you know, I've got the review summary, I did my own review. My own review was at that level, exceeds expectations, and I would, you know, from my perspective, very happy with the work you're doing for the town of Pushmane. And we've got a, we've got a lot on our plate as a community, as a government, and, you know, I don't think that the typical resident necessarily understands what happens here, what the town administrator does, and the workload that you have. But from my perspective, and I think in the review you got, I think we're very happy to have you, and think you're doing a very good job for this community, and I think that's reflected in, that's reflected in your review, so.
Thank you very much.
And once again, I just want to echo Roger's comments, I mean, we did a review in the great scale, you know, you are on the high ravage of it. Please, like, the communication has been good. Like I say, I probably get fifteen emails a day, about a day a week from you, different type, I mean, you keep me updated on everything that's going on, and you have very conscientious budget time negotiating with the, you know, the contracts, insurance premiums for all the town residents, so. Taking care of our infrastructure in town, you know, upgrading, like, you have the technology person in today, and that's come a long way over the two years, so. So, yeah, thank you for your time and your service, appreciate it.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Is there a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, Oak Colony Charter Agreement Approval for Placement on Town Meeting Warrant. The Oak Colony Regional Schools proposing updates to their charter, also known as the District Agreement. The intent of the upgrade is to ensure up-to-date language that accurately identifies current operation of the district. All members, all member towns were asked to have their municipal council review the proposed changes. Following review of all member municipal councils, council, the document is ready for placement on Town Meeting Warrant vote for approval. This was a while, we had gotten the document quite a while ago, town council reviewed it, and they came back, I think there was one change, I think.
They made, actually, I think, three, two, one major change and two minor edits. And they did that review, as you know, for three of the towns. So it was good, because we didn't have to really pay for it.
I'm gonna, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that we table this for the time being, and the reason I'm saying that is, is when Mr. Noble and I attended a meeting at the school three months ago, four months ago, perhaps, I might have asked at that time for a red line document that shows all the changes in the, in the, everything, the document as it exists now, and something that shows the proposed changes, and we still don't have that. So I actually emailed Mr. Noble and the superintendent this morning, asking for that document. So before I'm comfortable supporting changing that agreement, which is something we're gonna be stuck with till the end of time, I really want to see, the document they gave us that showed the changes was unreadable. And I know it's going to, I'd like to see what our attorney, so I want to know what's being changed, before I can be comfortable telling the residents of our community that they should endorse the changes. So I'm not suggesting there's any problem at all.
Right.
But I want to read it, I do want to read it. And it's not been given, it's not yet been given to me in a form that I can see what it used to be, and what is proposed, what changes are proposed. And I think it's important that we understand that. And once I've, once I've got that, I will, I will, I'll be right on it, but I don't have anything that...
Didn't you get three copies for all of the second persons to see whatever?
Yeah.
I expect it's coming pretty quick.
I think that we can't be the only town asking.
I asked the date the night we were at the school, and I was like, of course you need that, we'll get that right over to you.
So I can't believe that we're the only town asking. And here's the, here's the, well, the problem is the town... And here's the, here's the, well, the problem is, the town council reviewed a document. Changes were made.
Changes were made again.
Again. So now I see, I'd like to see, you know, Ross is right. Show me.
Right.
Don't just tell me. Show me.
Don't just tell me to vote on trust...
Correct. And the problem is, we come down to the fact that the length of the regional agreement is such that we're not going to publish it in the warrant. It will be a, you know, an available document at town clerk's office, town hall. You know, there'll be available copies at town meeting. But when the town residents come to town meeting, they're going to rely on the Board of Selectmen to have vetted this. And we can't have a situation where, well, this is the first time we've read it, too. We've got to be ready to say yes or no.
We've got plenty, we've got plenty of time to bring this in. I just, I'm just not comfortable right now saying...
I, I thought the request was reasonable, and I've actually had a conversation later this afternoon with, with the superintendent.
Okay.
And so I don't think he understood why we put the importance on it, which I don't understand why not. So we'll have an answer.
Okay. So motion to table that item at this point?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, new business. Memo from the town clerk requesting appointment of election inspectors. The town clerk would like, like the Board to appoint Linda Blaze, Christine Brown, Francis Bartel, as an election inspectors, as election inspectors to the future, to assist in future elections. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint the three individuals named as, what's the title? I'm sorry.
Election inspectors.
Election inspectors, election workers, yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent reserve, prefer, reserve fund transfer from via EMS for one-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars for rental of fire turnout gear. The chief has requested one-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars for the rental of firefighting turnout gear for three recruits who are attending the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy recruit training program as there is not enough money in his budget to cover the expenses. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the request for transfer from the reserve account as presented and forward to the finance committee for their approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Last, the town administrator's report.
Before you this evening is a rough draft of the rent with all of the articles as have been submitted. You still will have to actually vote to accept them into the warrant. And we'll try to do that either on the April second meeting or the April ninth. We might even, might be helpful if I could do it on the second, so... There's a couple editorial changes that I'll still have to make on some of the articles, make sure they meet the form that's necessary for the warrant. There are thirty-nine articles at the moment, and that's, last year we had forty-seven. So I think we're doing a pretty good job cutting it down.
Right.
There is a couple, there's a housekeeping change. I even sort of wonder the logic behind putting it on there, but the state requires that. We have to account differently for the cable money. And so there's an article to establish the revenue fund for the cable. So we get money from the franchise fee from Comcast into the town, and then it's been used for paying the cable bills, including the people who operate the cable and buying equipment. The state has decided that they want it far more formalized, and it needs to come in as a receipts-reserved account, or it could come in as an enterprise fund.
They don't like the shoebox. We keep the money?
They don't like the shoebox.
Okay.
So I didn't really think, because of the size of it, that it justified a rev, another enterprise fund. So I'm making the recommendation it's receipts-reserved fund, which means that the money that comes in for the cable franchise fee are reserved for the use of the cable. And they don't just come into the general fund and I use them any way I want to.
But we've not done that. I mean, we have reserved...
We have not done that.
No, we've reserved them. They're being used for that, but we just commingled the dollars, and we can no longer commingle the dollars.
We can no longer do that. They want it as a receipts-reserved, which is essentially formalizing what we've been doing.
Doing anyway, all right.
But it requires a town meeting vote. Okay? So this is why I think we make town meeting vote, you know, sort of boring, is we're going to... It's a housekeeping article.
Right.
But you'll see it appear in the budget where we have the ambulance receipts reserved, and we have the enterprise fund for the golf, and we have the enterprise fund for the sewer. You'll now see one more one for the cable.
Now, last year, the moderator, I did a nice job of lumping all that stuff into one vote. And that feels like something that could...
That would be an awesome addition to that.
All the housekeeping and the books for the library.
Routine, the routine stuff.
All the borrowing money.
And this year in particular, but we have to be careful of that, just because we think they're routine. The average president might, not necessarily, so I certainly will lean to the moderator's decision. They, we've cleaned up a lot of the nonsense before, like having to perpetually reauthorize a revolving fund. But I still have to authorize the amount of money that could go through the revolving fund, so that's still there. And I sort of think it's funny, they may even make it a bylaw under the new state rules. But then I still have to put the spending number in. So why couldn't I put that into the bylaw and then just change the bylaw in the future if I need to? Because a revolving fund is literally, somebody pays to go to the council on aging trip to Foxwoods, and then obviously they take money back out for that fund to pay for the trip to Foxwoods, and it's not going to the general fund. It's coming in, it's going out. That's a revolving fund. But we have to actually say, well, it could have no more than thirty thousand dollars at a time, and it's sort of a no-brainer, but, okay. But I have to reauthorize that. So that might possibly fall into a housekeeping article, but I think we need to explain.
If we can move things like that along, it would be helpful.
Well, usually them articles are no money attached.
Now, one of the things that I have done in our capital budget is one article, I think, number fourteen. And it adds up all of the requests from departments for capital items, including, for example, like a town hall roof, which I need. And Dan's truck for the water department, and...
Oh, here, I'm sorry.
And the chief's, the fire chief's request for laptops for the ambulance. So if you don't like the way I presented that, I would like to know that. If you want something to go out of there.
So you think...
I think it's fourteen. It's thirteen or fourteen. Big list of one of those.
The school is on page twenty-one.
Yeah, the school is done the same way, and the town side is done here.
Yeah.
And as you can see, there's a, a lot of departments with requests. And, you know, it totals up to real money, but individually, the articles are small.
If somebody objected to...
They could pull something out.
They could.
Yes.
Talk about it, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's one article rather than fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah.
But they can discuss all fifteen, too, so...
They can discuss them all. I mean, some of them...
The detail, the details here, so...
Yes.
But it just, it's easy for somebody, if they wanted to challenge one item.
Oh, indeed it is, yes.
I think that would be the only objection.
And this is clearly not a housekeeping article.
No, it's not.
And also...
But I think we're providing the residents with the detail, which I think they need to see.
And these need to, these need to still survive Selectmen's approval and finance committee approval. So they may come back and say, you know, no, you can't have the GIS plotter. I mean, that's a possibility, so...
Okay.
We don't know if it works. I try not to have forty-seven articles.
Yeah.
What else you got?
That's all I have. That's what I'm, that's what I'm spending my life doing, so...
All right, future business, next Selectmen's meeting, April ninth at five P.M.?
No, we decided...
Oh, April second, I'm sorry, that's right. April second at five P.M. Just change that. And at this time, entertain a motion. I will accept the motion to go into executive session under General Law C-3A-21A-2 to conduct the strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Wage and classification, as an open meeting, may have detrimental effect on vibrant condition of the public party. And I do declare, and we will return to public session. Is there a motion?
We will return to public session. I make a motion.
Mr. Cabral?
Yes.
Me, yes. We adjourned. We've discussed the wage and classification. We've come up with a lot of work, a few hours put, put into it, and I think it's a pretty fair assessment of our workers, the grades and steps. I think hopefully everybody's happy with what, where they are. You know, I think we're here to, to adopt it. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Cabral, do you have anything to say?
Well, gee, I'll just start with, so what the wage and classification study did is it studied the positions in town, and it looked at, gave every position a grade based on the work environment, based on the skill set, based on the training, based on any number of factors. It was pretty scientific. It assigned every, every job in town a grade based on different criteria, and ten criteria, and each criteria had a number of one to five, I believe, or one to six. And at the end of it, you know, you could, you did the math and you got, you got a grade. And so we checked all of those grades, and, you know, and within, within, between the grades, and then there's the scale. And the scale is a pay scale, is a page, pay range for every grade. So we looked at all of that. We compared every employee to the grade that was suggested, to the pay scale that was possible, to the, to what the jobs were paying in competitive communities. And the study actually looked at, I don't have it in fifteen communities, and, you know, we can all argue about what, what truly comparable communities are, but, but looked at what different positions are paying in other, in other communities. And so we went position by position, looked at what people are making now, looked at the proposed grade, I'm going to blank on the terms, the grade and the...
Steps.
Step, the grade and the step. And we tried to put people on the appropriate step that lined up with what they're making now, if that was appropriate or if that was not appropriate, what that position was making in comparable communities, because we want to, we want to pay our employees fairly. And in some cases, perhaps we've been getting away with not paying our employees fairly. That, that, you know, in some spots, we've had some turnover in town. We try to keep our good employees. We want to keep our good employees, and we, and we do that by paying them fairly. And so it was, it was, it's quite an effort. I mean, from the study to, to taking the study and, and applying the, applying the results of the study to the positions in the Town of Oquishnet. So we've, we've done that, and, and, I'm sorry, we have a motion. So the motion is that we adopt, we adopt the wage and classification study...
As amended.
As amended by the, by the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
A motion to adjourn, are appropriate, or is there...
A motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.